I'd like to call the Regular Board of Education in order on April 8th. Order please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Kelly.
Ms. Betterbit?
Here.
Mr. Caslayell?
Excused.
Miss Lynn?
Delayed.
Mr. Rakowski?
Excused.
Stedler? Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Stewart? Here. Mr. Wade?
Here.
Fire exits Matt?
Uh, exits are on the back of the LGI.
Alright, tonight we have two workshops. The first workshop is an employee recognition and so Dr. Landau's gonna leave us with that.
Okay, good evening everyone. So I started this uh, I started this thing called the Superintendent Blog last year and uh, I don't think anyone was really reading it. And so I started this year to highlight our uh, star students and star employees. And so now all these people telling me, well I just skip through the stuff that you say just to find out who the star employee and star student are. But it's been a really great process. So we asked principals and department heads across the district to just uh, help us tell the story of the Beacon City School District about the amazing employees that we have. And in a future board meeting, we're gonna bring the students to our stars. And so we look for people who go above and beyond and people who are kind of an example for everybody else. And so tonight, we're gonna just talk about three people, uh, three very special people. So how it's gonna work? I'm gonna say uh, nice things about each individual and ask that one person to come down for their certificate. And, and then after we do it for the three people, we're gonna do kind of attempt to do a group shot. And so Eric, you're gonna be our photographers tonight and uh, with the board. Okay? Alright, so first, first I want to talk about is Barb Aheer. Barb Aheer works in the Transportation Department as a bus driver. Uh, she comes to work every day with a positive attitude and sets high standards for herself and her fellow workers. Barbara's been with the district for twenty-seven years and is known and loved by the students, teachers, and principals she has worked with for so long. She is always happy to pitch in, always happy to go the extra mile to help out and get all of our students home safe. And she does it with a smile on her face. And I just wanna add and be published this one, I had so many different people come up to me and say, "She was my bus driver, you know, I'm sorry." But uh, you may impact that situation for quite a long time. So Barb, come on down to get yours. Alright, our next person is Linda Lane. Linda Lane is a head bus driver for the district. Uh, this past September marked Linda's thirtieth anniversary with the Beacon City Schools. In her role as a head bus driver, she works closely with the Athletic Department scheduling buses uh, for when Bulldog athletes are on the road. In addition, she helps ensure coverage is in place with forty-eight schools that the district transports students to each and every day. While the work is a challenge, she still enjoys keeping our students safe and on the move. Her knowledge of the district combined with her friendly demeanor makes her a favorite of students, parents, and staff alike. And on behalf of the administrators, I know they all really appreciate talking to you every day when they have a district with a bus. So Linda, thank you. And our last person tonight is Darlene Mazicom. So we originally did this uh, a couple of months ago and we had two of our star employees come up for the certificate and I kinda thought, you know, I wasn't sure if we were gonna keep doing it. And Darlene came up to me a few weeks later and said, "When do I get to come in?" So, we're doing it. So Darlene has been a food service associate in Beacon City Schools for thirty-six years. Our longest standing associate in that department. She has worked all of those years at Roundabout Middle School. Darlene has a true devotion to her work and runs a fabulous program at Roundabout. She leads her staff with a strong team approach, works hard to assure her staff feel part of the larger community of Roundabout. She has seen generations of students go through the school and many of the students she served years ago are now staff members in the district. She is a true leader and loves what she does. Her spotless kitchen, large service members, and committed staff members are a testament to her devotion. And I can say, I was in the parking lot with her and she was walking in after her shift to go to a training. And I was walking in for something else. And you were so excited to be learning that new skill. But I could tell you kinda got it out with me for maybe five seconds, but then I could tell you were gonna be a true pro in that training. Uh, so Darlene, we just wanna say thank you for everything you do every day for our kids. Alright, we're gonna ask our three star employees to come down. We're gonna take a few pictures with the board. We're gonna gather, I think is here. Yeah, you can bring your certificate.
It's over ninety years.
Alright.
Congratulations.
So are you all gonna stay for the rest of our meeting? Thank you very much for our three star employees. Thank you for everybody else to come and support them. And uh, you are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but you also are free to head out. Alright, sweetie. Anthony, are you listening? What was that Barb? I definitely will. I was telling Dr. Landau how we, how you used to watch me when I was...
Yeah, I used to babysit.
You're still little.
But y'all are good for me.
That's right. Just for the sake of time and the fact that Anthony, we're earning a nice University of Virginia ensemble tonight. They are winning a national basketball championship.
If we were interested in maybe keeping our comments short.
I wouldn't mind that. Anyway, alright, uh, that was super amazing people that we got to honor tonight. And I heard someone in the audience doing the math, ninety years collective experience with the people we were recognizing. So thanks to Karen and Ron for uh, sending us those star employees. And uh, thanks to Darlene for making sure we, we were keeping up with the certificate too. She wasn't able to make the first time we went and uh, I wasn't certain how motivated folks were to come to board me. And they were like, "Oh, we want, we want them for sure to come." So uh, you know, we have just so many people that uh, make up this wonderful school district and it's great to recognize folks. So we want to uh, we want to take you through the budget. Uh, we've done a lot of work leading up until today. So some of this will go quickly through, uh, some will go more in depth. But Amberie will be talking about the, the financial side of the budget. I'll be talking about the programmatic side. Feel free as we go to uh, ask questions. I'm not going to belabor the strategic plan tonight because we certainly talked about it in depth in lots of different meetings. But it's so nice to just have these slides, uh, that we have admission statement now and we have uh, what we want our graduates to leave us with. Uh, and we have belief statements as well. So our feeling, and we're always, always trying to do better, but our feeling uh, with this initial budget, that's kind of uh, in line with this new strategic plan uh, or planning process, that we have a budget that we feel in many ways really aligns nicely uh, with this sort of budget proposal. Excuse me, I should say. So, just to remind everyone about our beliefs, our attributes and dispositions, and our skills and abilities that we want our students to leave us with. So uh, when we were, when Amberie and I were reviewing uh, what we've put in front of you the last several months uh, for the budget, I think these focus areas uh, are, are really, are really good talking points for community members, for board members, for myself, uh, to really, or anybody in the district to really kind of look at uh, what were you doing with the budget? Uh, I used this quote before, but I'll, I'll keep using it because it's a, it's a really good one. An old superintendent I used to work with uh, would always say, start by saying, "Budget is, is the most important uh, thing" that we work on as a board superintendent because it obviously allows uh, everything that we do for children to happen in the district. Not only that, though, it represents our values as a district. And so I think the things that we're trying to focus on uh, in this budget help focus on our values as a district. So class size reduction, I'll, I'll get into the details of these things a little bit later. Class size reduction, additional coursework in Beacon High School, additional mental health supports at the secondary level, increased access to technology tools for our students, expanded, greatly expanded professional development, increased opportunities with gardening, farming, and the natural world through community partnerships, and supporting our new athletic field with additional structures. Uh, so, before we get in more detail with that, I think the thing that's on everyone's mind is just the sort of state of how we can pull this all off. So Amberie's gonna walk through a few slides, talk about the financial stuff.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, last Sunday, um, we received our final state aid runs on a, on the, when the budget was passed for the state. And we did receive additional state aid, um, in the amount of a little over six hundred thousand dollars, which was perfect because that's kind of where we were a little bit short. We were worried that we would have to maybe not be able to do some of the things that we had talked about this year and we would have to put them off. So, um, Dr. Linda will talk a little bit more about the specifics, but, but we were extremely happy about getting the additional state aid. Um, again, I just wanted to mention that um, we did, Beacon did receive a, a larger increase in the tax base growth factor, which was part of the tax cap calculation. That allowed us to have our cap be higher and I'll talk about that in a second. Um, and other things that just kind of helped. So we had a decrease in the teacher's retirement contribution. Um, so overall, that kind of helps the budget. We paid less into it. That's a state uh, percentage that's set. Uh, last year we had an increase. So, you know, that just takes more of the money away and goes into the um, the benefits in the pension area. Then there was a slight increase in employees' retirement, um, but not as significant as last year's increase in teachers' retirement. We also had seven teacher retirements, um, that are coming up in June. Uh, they are all being replaced, but the, their salary will be different, you know, going forward. So that actually helped us with budget. This sheet is just basically a revenue projection of our budget. Um, we are, we are asking the board at the next meeting to approve a budget for seventy-three million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand. Um, it's a budget to budget increase of about four point three one percent. But more importantly, it's within the cap. Our, our tax cap calculation um, is four point four four percent, which is up on the top in the right-hand column. Some, just some areas in the proposed budget column, um, for nineteen-twenty that are important. Our miscellaneous revenue number, um, our projections a little bit more. You remember, uh, Mrs. Candello spoke last week about Medicaid and about us being able to recap, uh, to recapture a lot of Medicaid revenue, which has been wonderful. Um, and so that, that's reflected in there as well. The tax reduction reserve, which we've been using for um, I would say the last five or six years, that, this is the last year. So the tax reduction reserve came into effect when we sold Old Beacon High School. And we've had, we put that in a reserve and we have systematically been using that to help fund the budget. But the two hundred thousand, two hundred is, is all that's left. So that's something that we have to kind of just keep in, in mind um, for next, for next year. Again, we were able to um, use, um, there's an estimate of unappropriated fund balance or other reserves that we can use to help the budget. And again, the state aid number of twenty-nine million, four seventy-four, six forty-eight was the increase um, amount that we received. I tried to make this look a little prettier because it's, it's, it's a complicated, but this is really just our tax cap calculation. Um, importantly, on the bottom again, it's the four point four four percent. Um, and if we've, uh, proposition two will go out for buses. And if we finance the buses like we have been doing over the last five years, we need to account for that as well. Um, so then the budget um, increase overall be four point two four percent with an overall of four point four four with the buses. So I, I did a preliminary estimated tax increase. Um, so right now, all we have is the current assessed values. So it was the assessments from last year and the basic star and average house. So um, on an average house in Beacon, taxes will go up about a hundred and sixty-nine dollars a year. That was consistent with the estimate that we had done last year. The numbers are all pretty much the same. Fishville is about two oh nine a year and Hoffengers is, is two ten a year. The important thing to realize is um, the past two years, the assessment values went way up when we actually did the levy in the summer. So although we present now with our best estimates, with our current assessments, we're anticipating the assessments to go up again. So when we, we speak again in August, these numbers will, will more likely be much lower than what it was. The tax rate has, the estimated tax rate right now is four point two two percent, but in the last two years, the tax rate per thousand has actually gone down because of the increase in assessments. So more properties are coming online, the levy stays the same, it's spread out over more people so that uh, uh, basically the tax rate will, will be a reduction. Yes?
So when somebody in the public looks at this and says, um, you know, "We live in Beacon, one sixty-nine per year average house", and how would they know whether they are above or below average of a house?
I didn't put it on this slide, but again, for the hearing, I'll, I'll really talk about what an average house is. It's between, it's, it's almost like three hundred thousand between two ninety and three hundred. Again, I wanna look at it again because values of homes have gone up as well. So I wanna be able to give people a pers- a perspective. I always like to, you know, I always look at this slide as like worst-case scenario. Because we're assuming that the assessments will be flat, which we know they have not been up in the last two years. But I always like to present something so people can see a number and, and actually be pleasantly surprised when they get their tax plans in the summer.
Question, do you mean average or median by the way?
Average, um, I usually use average. Okay, now back to you.
So just to uh, summarize some things that we talked about in the last board meeting, just in terms of staffing. If this is additional staffing, uh, that we're proposing in this budget for next year, the elementary level, uh, one class size reduction teacher. And uh, again, over the last two years, I think we've had seven positions at the elementary level to reduce class size. Fifty percent of our, our classes at the elementary level are below twenty. The other essentially fifty percent are between twenty and twenty-four. We have one class this year that's at twenty-five, a fifth grade class. And so that, I, I would put those class sizes up against uh, any district in the area. So that's something to be really proud of. One instrumental music teacher. So we're putting that as a budget initiative because uh, this year was covered in the grant uh, that uh, that Cilly was instrumental in writing. So uh, it is only one-year coverage, so that's a budget initiative. Uh, that's target, again, just to review, that's for fourth grade instrumental music. That's to get us, again, on par with uh, with other districts that have high-quality music programs. They usually start in instrumental music before fifth grade. And uh, the numbers, I can bring the numbers to a future board meeting. I don't have them in my head. But the numbers of participation in the fourth grade across all elementary schools have been fantastic. So uh, this trial year was great for us. There's high interest in the community and a lot of kids uh, taking instrumental music. And so we're very excited uh, to move that forward at the secondary level. Be moving forward with one business teacher at the high school. Uh, that would be starting a new program. Again, with the goal in a, in, in a couple of years to have an internship program connecting with area businesses. To have a social worker at the high school, uh, one with a special certificate in uh, drug and alcohol counseling. This person would also work with middle schoolers on a kind of an as-needed basis. Uh, right now, the high school has, along with the guidance department, one social worker and one psychologist. And as the saying goes, they kind of wear roller skates all day because they're just sort of going as quickly as possible from, from one issue to the next. And we really feel there's a, a strong case uh, for adding additional mental health supports at the secondary level. And then a halftime art teacher at the high school to uh, to develop some coursework in architectural design, interior design, possibly sculpture. I think we're still working on some of the details, but uh, our, our classes are some of our highest subscribed classes at the high school. And this would further strengthen and to kind of help us expand that department and also get into the technology side more. Uh, we're currently doing it to delve deeper into the, into the digital side.
So Matt, just to, just to be clear, we're, we have seven teachers that are retiring and we're replacing all seven?
Yes.
Then we're adding a teacher, instrumental for music teacher, uh, business teacher, social worker, and a point five art teacher.
Four and a half teachers.
Four and a half teachers.
Yes.
In addition to the seven that we're hiring for.
Yes.
For, that are through?
Yes.
Through retirement.
And we have posted, uh, just to talk about the staffing, we've done preliminary postings on, on, well, we haven't, we haven't done anticipated postings. We haven't done like business teacher yet or the halftime art teacher because we, we were concerned with this, you know, we did no state aid until a week ago and so we were concerned whether we could afford those. And we obviously want the community to weigh in on the vote on May twenty-first. But the rest, we've done anticipated vacancies. Where, where are we at with uh, how many, how many applicants we're?
We have several hundred applicants. Um, over four hundred for elementary, um, over two hundred for anticipated special education, and between fifty to one hundred and fifty for the other, the other areas. So we're in good standing. Our principals are, we've been working with them. They're ready, ready to move those committees forward within the next few weeks.
And I just think it was a clear, I just wanted to make sure that the public had a clear understanding that we're fulfilling the seven retired teachers and adding four point five positions
Yeah.
with this budget. And that's because of the increase that we received?
Yeah.
That's huge.
Yeah. Yeah, these are, I think these are all really strategic uses of staffing. Uh, and I'm, for lack of a better word, we're just incredibly excited about each and every one. So uh, so we're really excited to put these forward to the community. I've, I've already talked uh, with every PTO uh, about sort of preliminary, this is what we're thinking. We've gotten a lot of great feedback from PTOs and I'll talk a little bit later about some of the other communication we have planned. Uh, just in terms of programming, we've, we went through this really in-depth at the last board meeting. Uh, but again, just to review, business education would be new programming, project lead the way, computer science program. Would be new programming at the high school, the Italian course, possibly growing that into a full-blown, uh, you know, program at the high school, new offering, the art coursework, uh, in the English department, AP language and composition, magic realism as an elective, media literacy and research literacy. Research literacy is the science course, right? And uh, and that also will have an internship component. Uh, one of the things, uh, you heard in that wonderful video that was made, but one of the things in all my, all my uh, listening sessions with students this year, honestly, from fifth all the way through twelfth, that I've heard over and over is uh, our students are really craving, uh, they say it in different ways, but essentially they're craving uh, more real experience, whether it's simulations in class, uh, either ones that teachers design or ones that are technology-based, or being able to do, you know, like solve, solve a real problem or, you know, with these internships, we have planned in a few years to be out, out, you know, learning kind of that problem solving. So our students are really craving real experiences around problem solving. They're also craving uh, a lot more with technology and uh, and then just more choices in general. And so we think that uh, this additional programming at Beacon High School gets us on that path. Uh, so these are some things that, some of the things we've talked about, uh, and some we, we kind of realized we hadn't had a chance to put into, you know, one of our many budget presentations, uh, you know, earlier, uh, earlier this season. So I just wanted to kind of review some things that we are planning. And, you know, none of these are, like, the technology initiative is vague, but none of these are huge initiatives. But I think they're important because they're either sustaining or kind of growing things that we want to do in the district. So, you know, we've already discussed technology in an earlier uh, board meeting that we're, the one, the one initiative is continuing to the high school. And uh, and we'll have interactive boards uh, in all of the learning spaces in the high school. So we're very excited about that. I, I think it's been a huge success at Roundabout. It's been uh, a lot less kind of problematic, I think, than we thought, you know? I mean, I think this is what school districts discover everywhere. The kids really take care of the technology and they, and they, you know, wanna use it when applicable. And so it's really nice for them to have that tool. We can't wait for that to get started at the high school. Uh, John Giametta in an earlier board meeting discussed the need for just a few additional assistant coaches. We, and I might need you for these next two things, but uh, we, for the new turf field, uh, we want to have a scoreboard. And so we were able to fund that. And like, how much is that roughly?
Uh, the scoreboard's, we budgeted thirty thousand dollars.
So also, we realized, and this was after John's presentation, that we need to replace the pole vault mats on the track. Again, I'm not trying to get like into weeds, but these were just things that kind of came up either later or didn't fit into one of our budget presentations. Uh, on the next half of the page, we're expanding our partnership with Common Ground Farm. Right now, it's a little happenstance, like when an elementary student goes. So we're increasing that uh, that they do things in a very cost-efficient manner. So currently, uh, we pay ten thousand dollars for some of our students to do some experiences there. We're increasing that to thirty thousand dollars in this upcoming budget year. So every elementary student will have some experience at Common Ground Farm during the year. Uh, that fits into their curriculum and so we're excited to do that. We'll be funding the construction of the school garden at Roundabout Middle School, which was partially, or, you know, they have a lot of grant funding for that, but we wanna make up the difference. And that's just, I think, six or seven thousand. Uh, increased furniture budget, budget for all schools for replacement costs and also to fund alternative seating slash work arrangements. Uh, this is, uh, again, we're not targeting a huge amount of money for this. I think we're looking at about twenty-five thousand dollars overall for all of our schools. Uh, this would be in addition to like their current school budget that they have. I, you know, it's funny, when I'm in classrooms and students are in there, I am paying more, much more attention to, to the students. But I got the opportunity back uh, in the fall with our climate control issues, that I was in our classrooms a lot sort of late in the evening or on the weekend. And I really got to look at furniture and I was seeing like a need to do some replacing. So what we're challenging our principals and department heads and hopefully they'll be working with their teachers is like if we're replacing, if we're replacing things, let's like, let's at least find some ways to do some alternate kind of seating in classes. There's so many things out there uh, for students. I think we've all seen research that sitting in a chair for six hours a day isn't really healthy for anybody, let alone like an eight-year-old. And so, you know, there's other kinds of like alternate seating that I think we need to fund a little bit. I think some teachers who are interested in it to kind of do it on their own. And which is great, but we want to find some ways to fund that and also just to make replacements where replacements are needed. At a kind of a faster pace than what we've been doing. So we're excited. We're gonna kind of make a budget for each school based on the number of classrooms and students they have. Uh, but we're excited to see kids have uh, But we're excited to see kids have over maybe a few years to walk into a classroom, and there's some level of choice in how they might be seated or how they might be working. It's going to take a while, but that's something that we have a group of our administrators working on a plan for that in our admin meetings. Another area that we're funding very specifically, any elementary classroom has a classroom library. So that is different than the school library. Classroom library is like those books that are right there on the shelf, that kids are accessing for silent reading time or, you know, or just other times of the day where they have extra time. And a lot of teachers I know sort of fund their classroom libraries through a whole variety of means. I know when I was a teacher, I had all kinds of ways to get my classroom library going. What we'd really like to do is provide, not a lot, but some additional funding, I think we're thinking about $10,000. But have it be on like a per-teacher basis, principals will work with their staffs. Because what we really love to focus is we really want to make sure our classroom libraries represent the diversity in our district. And so we think, we think a lot of teachers have made strides in this area, but some teachers might not be because they don't have the funds to do it. And so we want to be a little bit more, a little bit more direct about that. You know, I read stuff about students' experiences in, you know, districts across our country. And the last thing you want them hearing is I, you know, went over to the classroom library and I couldn't find any book that I could connect with. And so we want to at least take some steps to change that. So we're going to have principals manage that at the elementary level. And then we're, you know, we'll look at secondary too, to see what the needs are there. They run their classrooms a little bit differently, but we want to take some steps in that direction. And translation services. We don't have a totally final budget on this because we're kind of looking at a mix. We're looking at, you know, having some of our employees do it on a stipend basis. And then maybe potentially also using a service that boasts these too. So we're looking sort of to do a mix of translation. And so, excuse me, this isn't interpreting, that's something that we already provide. This would be translating school messages that go home, school newsletters, especially sort of, you know, communications that are emergency-related and things like that. We're sort of predicting right now, we're earmarking about $10,000 for that, so we'll see how that goes. And then lastly, we have a good relationship with Hudson Valley C. Excuse me. And we have gardens at our four elementary schools. This is a great example of something that's very uniform across our elementary schools. You know, the students have a very kind of clear experience at each of our schools. What people don't know is a lot of what Hudson Valley C does is funded through grants that they seek out. And so they work very hard at getting these grants, but they've had a little bit of decrease on sort of the grant funding side on their end. And so we wanted to continue that level of service for our students. So we're increasing our contribution to this from 40,000 to 60,000, which we still think is a good deal. And, but I just kind of wanted to make note of these things because I think sometimes these are things, when we're talking about a big budget, that kind of get lost in the sauce, so to speak, and I wanted to highlight some. We're excited about each and every one of these things. Any questions about any of those?
When you say diversity of the library, you mean the diversity of the book selections? You're not talking about any of the other offerings that, because the library is also, I guess, it's also been a place where some of the STEM stuff's been happening too. So you're not talking about diversifying those offerings, but you're just diversifying culturally the library, the book selections?
Yeah, especially in classroom libraries. We want a student to not have to browse for 20 minutes to find a book that has African-American characters. You know, we want, we want more diversity in those classroom libraries. If you, something that you Google, there's, this has been a big kind of thing in the educational world the last few years there. I'm not going to remember her name, but an amazing, I think she was like in fourth or fifth grade. A few years ago, she was kind of all over like news shows and on social media. And she spoke out because her classroom really didn't have much diversity in the classroom library. And so she started being really proactive and trying to bring attention to it. And it's always been something just that's, I've always worked to as a principal or wherever I've been because I've been in diverse environments. But we just wanted to be a little intentional with that. And, you know, I also know teachers kind of fund their classroom libraries sometimes through their own means, and we'd like to support that too.
And I commend you in that effort. You know, there are some books that I can't find, sometimes even in the public library system here. So the, what about anything new for, to advance the science and engineering part? I'm all science, I know we talked about lots of computer science, but, you know, more of the engineering and traditional sciences and math?
It's a program that's ongoing, so I guess I didn't put it on here because it's not new. But the maker spaces slash coding efforts at the elementary school have really ramped up this year. Each of the four, this is one at Ramout too, or they're just at? At the elementary level, it's through TEQ. And they each have like this technology maker space kit. And I, it's been really cool for me to see there are more and more students who are doing this basic coding, working with Ozabots, you know, through either library or their kids, you know, kids get to go to the maker space time. And so that's, that is something that was kind of new last year, but that is ongoing. We continue to support through more like the professional development end.
In addition to that, we have, we already have funding available in our title footprint that's been set aside for additional.
And how far do you think we are in building a robotics lab in the high school?
I...
I am? No, just turn it off.
I think this is a presentation about the budget and what's in the budget.
No, I know.
And so you're asking questions that like...
It's my last question.
Three years.
Okay, thank you.
Is that decisive and strong? I, you know, I get materials on like how to develop these things for different companies. Obviously, you don't have to do it through a company, but I think from a financial, from a financial standpoint and just sort of readiness standpoint, I'm sort of eyeing three years?
Fair answer.
This was just a slide from Mike Keely's technology presentation. We just wanted to put it up there to remind everyone about the use of one-to-one. Again, when we say 2020, everyone is one-to-one. I always say this, it does not mean like our elementary students will be logging a Chromebook home and that they're like responsible for Chromebook all day. It just means they have easy access to one if their teacher has, you know, activities that they, that they should be doing in class. So this is great, this is hard under 10, and Mike has really taken this to the next level. And again, the Ramout effort has gone really well this year. And again, so we're not, we really got in-depth with the professional development at the last board meeting, so I am not going to relive every bullet point, except to say we're super excited about this cohort model. This was like a three-year plan, and we're investing a lot of resources into this. So I think we're kind of looking at it, like if we looked at a typical year's PD, we're adding about 50,000 to 60,000 to that for this year. So our hope is that we can continue that over the next few years. You know, I firmly believe adding staff is wonderful, but like I firmly believe we really need to invest in the staff that we already have. And so we really want to find some common experiences for our staff, and they're not just flavor of the month. They, you know, we have like a three-year plan for folks to sort of cycle through things. And they really focus on our core values, our beliefs, in that inequitable education for all, developing a culture of care in the district. And also making our classrooms truly engaging places. Back to the student, to the student focus groups I've been doing over the last couple of months. Our students absolutely have been so positive in praising every engaging experience that they have, and they want more. Like they want, you know, they want more simulations, they want more, you know, problem solving, they want more projects. And so you can't just snap your fingers and make that happen, you need to really support folks. Give them time and training to develop those learning experiences. So we're really excited about this PD plan, and it is a significant investment beyond what we have normally done. And I will have to say, you know, thank you to the state for that additional state aid that's making a lot of this happen this year. So that is it, that is our overview. And, oh, communication, I did put it on a slide. But I'm going to do at least three right now, I'm trying to add a couple more. Starting on April 20th, which is Sunday night, I'm doing the first one at the Beacon Tabernacle. Then I'm doing one that Thursday at Holland Library. And then the next week, all of these things will be coming out in the next couple of days. And then I'm doing another one at Beacon Rec. I'm working on an event at the Elks Club if they're willing to have me. And maybe, maybe one more where, along with doing the PTO meetings, we're just going to kind of talk about strategic plan, talk about our equity report card and how it all fits into the budget. And we always get really great questions when we just kind of go out there into the community, so we're excited about that. Once we get our schedule nailed down, we would love to have board members join us. And so we're excited about that. We will be doing, right after the board hopefully adapts to the budget on April 23rd, we're going to do the postcard.
Postcard will go out immediately after that.
The postcard will go out immediately, which will be just like that, you know, that little postcard that captures some of these highlights. And then we'll do the bigger budget flyer once we know who's running for school board. And in that, we'll go out, the school board, the school board petitions are due May 1st. And so right after that, we'll get that final budget mail or the bigger mailer done. I'll be going back around to PTOs that will have me, just to talk, I've kind of gotten into this with all the PTOs anyway because I was just too excited to hold it back, but I'll sort of talk about what's, you know, officially in the budget. I have to, I'll thank, a huge thanks to the board for hanging with us through a rather lengthy budget process, super detailed, but also supporting our initiatives for especially professional development. I'm giving you a special thanks for that because a lot of districts struggle with investing more into PD. And so I really have a lot of appreciation for the board for challenging us to do more with PD. And so this is an exciting budget to go out and talk about. Another thing with the budget though, is, you know, we are adding four and a half positions, additional positions beyond who's retiring. We do, you know, Amory and I talk a lot about sort of what's sustainable. It seems like every time, at least I open, get on the internet or look at some sort of newspaper, that there's like a warning sign of recession or, you know, warning sign of the economy changing. So we want to put proposals in front of you that we think that we can kind of carry through over years. So I think if we came to you with like, you know, seven or eight additional staff positions or, you know, something that was really extravagant, we could be faced with three years from now, having to cut half of those just to make ends meet. Our feeling is, again, you know, I guess we could be proven wrong, but our feeling is that we can carry these through ups and downs. So we're excited to put them forward to the, to you and the community. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Matt. And thank you to your administrative staff.
Yeah.
Some of our key budget presenters are out there and they're talking. Also, I mean, I would like to thank you, I know it's a year-long process, and you and your team have done a great job. I mean, looking at, listening to what the board was saying and the strategic planning that's been going on and how you tied it to it, and making something that's sustainable is a benefit. I know I'm looking at other districts and they're losing positions through matrician, and yet we're adding 4.5 positions. So that's something to be highlighted. I mean, you're looking at the class size being reduced even further. Our population's decreasing, knowing that it could increase with all the development and stuff going on. But yet, it's all falling together, so it's something to be commended. I mean, the programs at the high school, I can't wait for my daughter to get there to start experiencing it and stuff. So, I mean, and the garden is going to be sustained from the elementary level to the middle school. So it's a really comprehensive plan that the administrative team is looking at, and listening to the students, I think, is the key part, so.
Yeah, no, I, it's funny, I, I'm a parent in the district too, and some of the stuff that's years away, I'm like, oh, this is going to be cool. When Joey gets there. So, so yeah, I have that extra feeling along with the rest of the board too. And I was a little nervous when the strategic planning process started because I was like, how are we going to fit, how are we going to fit this together? And I'm saying, we did it perfectly, but we really tried to put a lot of thought into it. And I think those connections are starting to happen between that strategic planning, thinking and the budget. And so I'm excited to go out to the community and take this out there, so.
That's a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individuals. And that is adjusted based on what it was on board docs, they took out to seek attorney-client privileges because our attorney's not coming, so it's just to have a discussion about personnel in the district.
So moved, second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carried, seminar board should return in about 10 minutes. I would like everyone to rise for a moment of silence for Ms. Doris Lauren Durkin, who retired after serving 20 years as a school nurse for Ramout Middle School. Thank you. All right, interviewing the agenda, does anybody have anything that they would like to add to the agenda or adjust? Here are none, we're going to go to student and school presentations. Seeing none, we're going to go to parent groups. We had no one sign up for open to the public? Anybody out there that'd like to speak? All right, we're going to go to the superintendent's report.
I spoke a lot about the budgets, so I'll be really brief. Something on the agenda tonight is about a change in our calendar. And so this, so the calendar kind of is measured in two ways. Hours is the new state requirement, but also days, we measure both with the state and also our employees. And so in our contract with the Beacon Teachers Association, if, if we only take, if we only use one snow day, then we have two days we need to put back into the calendar. If we use between two and five snow days, then we have to put one day back into the calendar. If we use six snow days, then we put no days back into the calendar. So we only use three this year, despite lots of different experiences with the weather, with delays and early releases. We only officially use three snow days. And so we are putting a day back, or excuse me, taking a day off of the calendar for students and teachers, and that is the Tuesday after Memorial Day. So once we go through this tonight at the board level, we will, I will notify the community that Memorial Day weekend will now be a five-day weekend because Friday before Memorial Day is oftentimes like a snow makeup day if you go beyond six, but we didn't do that, so we have that Friday, we have Monday Memorial Day, and now we'll have Tuesday. Some other districts went with the Thursday before Memorial Day. We have some students scheduled to be at Sharp Reservation on that Thursday. And we have the career fair at the high school on that Thursday, so we are going with the Tuesday. And every year is kind of like a little experience with the day, so this is a new one for me as well. So we'll do our best to explain this to the community. I think it happened three years ago where we put a day back on, so we'll be doing it again.
And that's 12.14, the revised calendar. All right, so we have unfinished business. So at the last board meeting, we, as a board, we came to a consensus that we would ask our attorneys to see if the county would do a joint RFP for the appraisal of the land. And we stipulated that it was three or four different ways to do the appraisal. And so our attorney came back, sent us a letter. Did everybody have a chance to review it?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yeah, how come we don't have three or four different options? We just got two, one of which lumps everything together. I don't think this is what we were looking for.
Well, we're, I mean, this is kind of saying that we will be writing it, isn't it? So we have the option to make it exactly how we want it.
I think we want to know what everything is separately, so we can sort of mix and match and decide which way we want to go. Because there's a lot of options here.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, that feeds into my question as well. I mean, I'll be, I know the...
So, yeah, I mean, that feeds into my question as well. I mean, I'll be, I know this is the preliminary agreement that the two attorneys, the attorneys from our side, the attorneys from the county side has made, but the, um, but if we're writing it, do we get to see it before it gets sent to the county attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I spoke with Dan Pettigrew briefly today just about some of your concerns and for sure. I mean, that, that's, I should say, that's really up to the board, you know, so I would assume you would wanna see it. I think Dan's assumption is that you would wanna see it. So that's, that's his intent. The, the question about why is he doing the RFP and the county person's doing what?
The MOU.
The MOU. That was just, they kind of were just dividing labor. So he, he said there's really nothing to read into that besides they just were kind of divvying things up a little bit. But you most certainly can see the RFP and that could be something that Dan comes to the meeting or however you want that to be. That's, that's not a problem.
I'd like to point out that I think it's good news that there seems to be a good, high level of cooperation. And we just have to hammer out details, but they're, they're willing to, you know, share the costs with us and paying your attorneys is part of.
It's probably that part.
I think, I mean, it's just building on our discussions from last time. I think it's moving in the right direction and now we just need to hammer out some details. And I think we have them from the last meeting, how we would like to see the parcels assessed. And so, I mean, I could look back in the minutes and send something in an email form so that we can forward it to the attorneys and just pull that. But I think we have the structure essentially, and if they're dividing and conquering and he's writing the RFP, we sort of have it. So I don't feel like there's.
I mean, maybe we could do, if we could go to him and see a draft before, like, you know, sort of by the end of next week or something so that by the next meeting, we can actually be voting on the RFP. I think that would be ideal to kind of just keep the momentum going. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes. In fact, I was gonna ask whether we need a motion to empower attorney to draft an RFP.
No, I think that we gave that. We wanted to best gate and we don't need a board motion to do an RFP for it. We had a discussion that whether it was gonna be solely district or joint.
Yeah, okay.
So a question that I had was, I don't see here, and maybe it's part of the next step, but awarding the job to the appraiser, how will that?
We need to get the appraisers.
Get the appraise, the, the RFPs first.
And responses.
And then we'll hammer out how we choose.
I thought, I thought that might be an MOU, those details. That's what the impression I had got, that the MOU would live, would detail how we would choose the appraiser.
Terms and conditions?
Yeah.
What can we ask Dan if he'll see that?
Write a draft of the MOU would also be helpful.
Oh, definitely, I think we should, well, I mean, I def, well, I think that the county is on the hook for drafting it, but I think, definitely think we're gonna look at it before we agree to.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, but, but I don't think it's, I don't think one is, one should hinder the other. I think we know we need an RFP anyway.
Absolutely.
All right.
And then there's no issue with, with them handing, handing us all the bidders that came in, right, all the proposals that came in.
It's a joint RFP, so we would have the same access that they would have.
We would have the same access. We have a bid net.
I said we would have the same access that they would have.
Okay.
All right. Committee reports including board comments. Craig.
We'll have our couple of committee meetings on Wednesday evening. Facilities in operation at 7:00. And I think Mike is absent after that, Mr. Rakowski, but we'll carry on. And we have the Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative following that. We'll take a look at what has come forth from Albany. I would say roughly speaking, it was, it's half of, but it's definitely better than none. And some good things besides just the budget in there, some improvements. Other things didn't fly, but there's always another year. And we probably should begin to return to the subject of the initiative that we had launched to look at some kind of legislative change that would enable emergency rescheduling of school board elections when they get hit by hurricanes and other disasters, as you may recall. We started that, so perhaps we can begin to pick that one up again.
Sounds good.
Barbara?
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanna start by saying that I'm excited about so many of the things that are coming up in the plan. I love the, the training for responsive classrooms and restorative practice. I love that we're prioritizing the diversity of classroom libraries and that we are trying to incorporate translation students for families. I think these things go a long way toward making all families feel included in the community. And I wanna thank everyone who's involved in making those decisions and I'm really grateful that we're, we're taking care of these things. Just a quick update for the last wellness committee meeting. The Wellness and College Fair is coming up April 11, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the high school. Health teacher Diane Tansy, who's been coordinating the event, said that there will be organizations there to offer resources and information. It includes a variety of organizations who will be talking about everything from mindfulness training to other resources like Grace Smith House. And there will be tables set up in the athletic lobby, so I hope people come to that.
When was that for again?
It's April 11, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Ms. Tansy is also working with the Buildings Administration on a mindful meditation room for students at the high school. Hopefully next year, I think, was the, was the goal. So that sounds really great. And, and also goes towards sort of the whole restorative practice piece, so I'm excited about that. We, we also discussed the, the enhanced relationship with coming round fun and also talked about building the garden at Ramout. Another thing I wanted to mention that we talked about was a proposed garden and environmental club at the middle school, which looks like it would be getting off the ground next year if all goes according to plan. And there are also some exciting professional development opportunities around food education and nutrition. Hopefully we'll have more details on that as plans develop, but it was all really exciting stuff. The next wellness meeting is Wednesday, May 1st at 4:00 p.m. at the high school. Childcare, be there. And one last little plug, for anybody who wants to contribute to diverse authors in the special education English classrooms at Beacon High School. Get With Beacon is still running its book drive through the end of April. You can order books from the teacher's wish list at Medical Books. So these are the special education English teachers who put these lists together and they're great. There are a lot of underrepresented authors there. And I think we're a little more than halfway to our goal, nine books, so it's a great plus.
Great. Thank you.
I don't wanna repeat what we did, but I'm also just so excited about everything that's coming up. Matt, when you first came, I thought, well, I hope my kids aren't out of the school system here before all this great stuff happens. But I'm super happy that even my high school sophomore will get to see some of these things. So thank you for all the hard work. It's really exciting.
Thank you. Anthony?
Good evening. The next, the next policy and diversity committee meetings will be May 6, Monday. Policy will be at 7 o'clock and diversity will be at 8:15. And again, I reiterate my thanks to Matt and his team on the budget process. And as, and, and sympathetic to the parents that are very happy that their kids are gonna go into the secondary level with all these offerings. You know, kinda sad that I already missed the boat, but, but I am happy that, that the future generations are being attended to. And it's all about the students. Thank you. Oh, I also wanted to say that I regret that, you know, while I'm traveling, I do thank the board for, for their patience. And I did look up when eighth grade will be in Washington DC, 'cause I've been in Washington DC a lot. And I happen to be in West Virginia the week they're there, so I just can't win.
That's cool. Okay.
Sustainability Committee is meeting on, is it Wednesday ahead or Tuesday tomorrow?
Tomorrow, 6.
Yeah, 6, that's right. Sorry, I'm confused. My wires are crossed with facilities. Tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. And we'll be continuing to build off of the work that we've been doing around green ribbon schools framework. Yeah, I'm sorry to sound like I broke a record here, but I'll try and put my own spin on this phrase. It's, it's really rewarding after many years of working through some pretty significant structural changes to just start to see all these things come to fruition. One thing that we always knew is that we couldn't magically just increase our budget. And, and I think that often what happens, what taxpayers complain about is when money just gets thrown at problems and it doesn't necessarily reflect the best solutions. And I think what we're investing in here are what our students are crying out for specifically. And then also we're making the most important investment, which is, you know, these are just buildings without the people who walk in the door every day. And so investing in our staff and the culture here and having gone through like a restorative training in a very limited way. One of the biggest things you learn is it's a listening exercise and it's very powerful. And then once you start to really hear what the people around you are saying and really have empathy for them, you can start to identify problems and, and come up with very creative solutions. And so I think we're making one of the smartest investments that you can with tax dollars. So thank you so much for all the hard work and putting it together.
Matt?
Same. Great, great job on the budget. It is exciting. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go on about it, but I think it's really great. I've been talking to people about it and feel very strongly that it's solid and great with kids. I, oh, and especially this, actually the small, some of the smaller things like the classroom library. It's like the, these investments really add up and I think they've really been lacking. And so that, you know, I think that will build good feelings in a lot of places. Eric, is our next curriculum meeting not until May, May 15?
Pressure's on, Eric.
It's okay. May 15. I, I can always update at the next board meeting.
And CII, that's all.
Yeah. What's the score?
He's made up his chip too. He wants to go and see it too.
Oh, April 24th?
Yes.
Okay, next, next curriculum meeting is April 24. The, what's the other? Oh, the only other thing is I had asked, you know, I do this every year, asking about changing the size of the board. And we, we've talked about it before, but we've never really gotten all of the information about how that would happen. And several other members had approached me about it. So Anne Marie is looking into that and hopefully at the next meeting, we can present like what that would actually look like and, and talk about it if people want to.
And what the process would look like and stuff, right?
Exactly. That's what I mean, the details of it. And, and it'll be into the board if we wanna talk about it.
All right. I only have one update. On Thursday, I met with Assemblyman Jacobson as part of the Public Relations, Legislative and Advocacy Committee. We talked about, he asked what my wish list was. And so I, I started out by thanking for his support on getting the TRS reserve because that's something that legislation has passed. So that's something that's really good. And then he wanted to talk about a full day pre-K and how we should be pushing for it. And I said, I asked, would there be stable aid for full day pre-K? And it's not, the, the aid for full day pre-K is the first year and then it's, it becomes unfunded. And he didn't go into it. So then we had a little conversation and I tried to get onto my wish list. And the next thing I was advocating for was the capital project for BOSI's being exempt from the tax cap. And he thought that was a done deal. And I was like, it's not a done deal yet. However, but he was diligently researching it during the meeting, so he was out and about trying to look it up. And it's not a done deal yet.
When was your meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday. So that's not a done deal because it's one of those things that was left out? Or what? Is it, or is it still that they're working on?
I believe it's still being worked on, but it hasn't been voted on yet. He thought it was a done deal. He was like, done. And I was like, I don't think it's done yet. But he was, he was adamantly during that time, he actually left the room for 15 minutes, was trying to call people and figure out if it was a done deal or not. And then when he came back, it was like the meeting was over. And so I'm gonna follow to, letter to him. I wanted to ask him about bullet aid and get some support for that. He was aware of some of the increases that we've had for, for the opposed, the increase from the governor's proposed to what we now got with the new allocation, so he was aware of that piece. But I do feel it's important and I'll draft a letter so the board can see it before I send it. And just following up as to what we talked about and what other items that I would like to include to that wish list to talk about. And one of them being the bullet aid aspect. So I just wanna update the board. The bullet aid?
We wanna explain that?
Sure, so when there's a bill passed, there's some additional funding that's put into some, some, and, and that's called bullet aid. And sometimes that could be earmarked for districts and stuff. So just trying to get Beacon's name in there for, for some of that funding.
Have we ever received bullet aid before?
Yes.
Frank, we, Frank was very generous.
Yes, Frank was very, yeah.
Frank Scartatos. I, I think it's so great that you met with him. And I think that those meetings can be really challenging because law and liquor's time is always limited and they're always dealing with this like broader spectrum of things. And so one of the lessons I've learned from doing a small bit of that type of work is repetition, repetition, repetition. You have to get in front of them, remind them you exist, remind them of your problems all the time. So I think a follow-up letter would be so critical to that. And then another follow-up letter, and then another visit, and another follow-up letter, and, you know.
Absolutely. I could tell you it was very hard because I tend to be a little bit more structured. And for someone just to get up and leave for 15 minutes was frustrating, I'm not gonna lie. I was frustrated at that point. But it was nice that when I got to my car, he came running out to show me a piece of paper that it is on the docket, but it hasn't been approved yet for the capital. But it's something that I think that is trying to get them to be aware that it is concerning to the districts. And so having the opportunity to speak about it and following up with a letter will always help, so I'll, I'll follow up with something.
Messaging is always hard and it's one of those things where companies spend a lot of money to make sure things stay in front of people. So for things that don't have a lot of money behind them, it's always good to be annoying.
No, absolutely. So.
I think, I rarely talk about politics, but I'll just be brief. I think, you know, some good strides were made this year. Craig, you kind of, you, you said that, but I think it's important for everyone in Albany to realize that this is just the beginning. This wasn't the year that education got taken care of. There's many more years that are needed to kind of right the ship in the state. So, you know, if they keep hearing that, I think it's helpful too.
So it was a good first time. I think it's a good start and that we can continue to grow on it.
And he shares an office with James Booth, so that might be a strategic.
He's moving. He was at 154 North Plank, but he is moving over there because he's.
Maybe before he moves, we should, yeah, see them both again. To birthplace them.
Someone might have to come with me.
Okay.
All right, so we're at the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits supportive education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and the item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything on the consent agenda a board member would like pulled?
6, 10, 11.
12.06?
Yes.
12.10?
Yes.
And 12.11?
Yes.
Any other items? All right, I need a motion to approve agenda items 12.02 through 12.14 minus 12.06, 12.10, and 12.11.
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. I need a motion for 12.06.
Motion for approval of 12.06.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
So 12.06, there's a couple of things I had questions on. So MVP and emblem there for the insurance carriers for our employees?
Those are two of our health insurance carriers, two of the four that we offer.
And then there's a New York State Ed, the Domitory Authority?
Uh, yes. So if a special act district does a capital project, they don't pay for the capital project directly. they don't pay for the capital project directly. All of the schools that send children to that facility pay a portion of the capital project. So, they get, they get their funding through the dormitory authority, and then it's a rate that's adjusted and sent out to each of the districts that send children there. So, we have to pay a tuition fee, plus we pay a dormitory fee.
So, that's not a loan, that's actually just a, a roughly boot pot of money that we...
It's just, it's just an expenditure that, that we have to incur to help them pay off their capital project, because they don't have a tax base to actually raise funds.
So, that's not the same dormitory financing that BOSI's had talked about?
Well, they, so BOSI's, it's similar in nature, so BOSI's can go to the dormitory authority to be funded for a capital project. Special act district is the same way. It's not, it doesn't have a funding source like we do for taxpayers.
And then, the, there's 40K for a reserve?
The reserve is, is, is a, an amount paid to, for US Postal Service for our mail, our bulk mail. The reserve is the pay, payee on the check.
Oh, okay, right. No further questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried, seven, zero. Need a motion for 12.10?
Motion to approve 12.10?
Second.
Second.
Comments or questions?
So, the contract's funded already, January 1st?
It, it's a student placement, so the student was placed in a school in New Yorktown School District at the beginning of January. And it's for the school year from January to June. But we did not get the contract from Yorktown School District till recently, which is why it's coming to the board now.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried, seven, zero. Need a motion for 12 point, uh, 12.11?
Motion to accept 12.11.
Second.
Comments or questions?
So, the contract for the field turf has handwritten notes on it, crossed out. And then, we're still dealing with a, a company in New York, in Johnson City, New York. So, can you, can you explain that a little? Why, why is, why do we have cross-outs on the...
So, that was an AIA form contract that was, that was completed. So, when, when the board approved the turf field, they approved the co-op. And so, our construction manager reached out to us to have us change the contract to field turf, because they are the one that has the contract with the co-op. So, how this works is the contract is with field turf, and then they sub out the site work to Shinago. So, that's what, why that contract was on there. But they don't have the contract with the co-op, so we have to actually have the contract with field turf, and then they do the sub work. Field turf is the one that has the actual turf field. Right, but the Shinago is the one that does the site work from there, so that's why there, there was a change.
And has our attorney looked at this?
Our attorney is, has reviewed it. Actually, Judy reviewed it, and there's a couple of comments that are being investigated. So, we can approve it, but it will be subject to the final review of the attorney.
I think one of the critical questions is to make sure that the scope of work is clearly understood, what's in there and anything that's not in there.
Well, the, I provided Judy today with the agreement that we did with the co-op and then the proposal portion. So, she did look at that to make sure. She has a little, she has a couple of things that she wanted tweaked in the contract before it got out. The reason that the board is being asked to do it is subject to an attorney approval is because we want to have the final approval and then get the work started and not wait until the next board meeting, because they want to actually start breaking ground once it's dry in the back pretty soon.
So, I'll have to amend my motion.
We, we could amend, say, I would like to make amendment to 12.11.
Yeah, so, yeah. So, I'd like to amend my motion to 12.11 to be approved conditional to an attorney review.
Subject to the final review of a school's attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Second to that.
Comments or questions about the amendment? So, it would be that we would approve the contract subject to final review for all the school, by the school's attorney? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Posed? Motion carried, seven, zero. So, now we amended the motion, so now it's to approve 12.11 with the amend, amendment that was there, which it was first, it was a motion by Anthony, seconded by Flora.
I have one more question on that. Sorry. So, there's, there's donations listed in the...
So, we had asked in part of the negotiation contract that we want additional markings put on the field. So, we want it marked for not only soccer, but boys and girls lacrosse. And also, I don't know if it was, it's some extra, field hockey and some extra football markings. So, we didn't want to pay for them, so they've agreed to do it without charging us, so that, that's what it was. We've got that all cleared out with the construction manager today.
I just, I'm just worried the way it's worded, I mean, usually it's just no fee or no charge. Donation seems to be a pretty, pretty interesting way to say something on a contract.
We have the attorney review though.
Mm-hmm. Well, he, they, yeah, we did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried, seven, zero. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
That was Anthony, seconded. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried, seven, zero. Enjoy the basketball game.